Athlete Brielle plays flag football, basketball and cheers. Next Ms. Cassandra Whitlock. Cassandra has also been a resident of Inkster since she was born. She has attended Hicks Elementary School since she was in kindergarten. Cassandra is a fifth grade student in Ms. Newberry's class. Cassandra is by far one of Mrs. G's and Ms. Babbiak's most improved students. Cassandra has learned to stand up for what's right and to focus her energy on being a phenomenal student leader. She is a member of our Hicks service squad. She lives at home with her mom, dad, sister, two brothers and a dog named Chief. Cassandra also has four other brothers and another sister. She is an avid athlete and plays basketball for the Hicks Elementary Hornets and you should see her shoot. Next, last but certainly not least, Mr. David Ruiz Jimenez. Has been a resident of Inkster, Michigan since he was born. He has attended Hicks Elementary since he was in kindergarten also. David is a fifth grade student in Ms. Newberry's class. David has been an absolute pleasure to have at Hicks every year. He is beyond kind and is easily one of the top leaders to represent Hicks proud. David lives at home. He also lives at his dad's house with his stepmom, baby sister, older sister, brother and his bunny named Bear. And in Spanish, David, correct me if I get this wrong, Osita? Okay, and his dog named Coda. David loves to play soccer with his brother and friends when his homework is complete.
Awesome.
That's it?
As we call this meeting to order. As we call this meeting to order, our young people are going to lead us off in our place of allegiance. So guys, why don't you come step right forward.
Yes, all four of you.
Right here.
Alright.
And when you start, we'll follow. Only you. Whatever.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
Alright, there you go. Alright, good job.
Why aren't they getting kicked in for the mayor shaking their hand? She's getting kicked in the mayor's face.
Alright, Senator, roll call please. Doctor, we'll get right with you. We're gonna get into our roll call then you can get your presentation going, okay? Thank you, sir.
Mayor Patrick Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Protim Kim Howard.
Here.
Councilmember George Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Regina Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandra Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Stephen Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilmember Danai Shaw.
Alright, we have a quorum. Awesome. Alright, and before we get off into it, the chair would like to recognize any board members here from Westland Public School District. If you are, please stand at this time. Alright. You know, Easter gets a bad rap of not having schools in Inkster, but we have some of the most outstanding schools within our community. We have school of choices. So we're gonna move that narrative onto the sideline. Continue our relationships with our schools right here in our community. As you'll see tonight, some of the wonderful things that Westland Public School District is doing for our residents here in the city of Inkster. Alright, closed session items, we got through it. Approval of the agenda?
Some move.
For. Moved and supported with the one additional item, Madam Clerk. Item D. From closed session. We'll be, we add it to the agenda because we know what it is. Just add it. Closed session. Alright. Anything else? Thank you, Mayor Protim. It was just brought to my attention that we need to have a moment of silence for Mr. Chapman. Let's let Safe do what he's doing and then we'll, out of respect, then we'll do that. Alright guys, just stay still for a second. Let's have a moment of silence for Mr. Alex Chapman, please. Thank you, moving right along. Let's have a motion as it relates to the approval of the agenda. It's been moved and properly supported. Any other discussion as it relates to the agenda? Hearing done, rope, I'm sorry, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes, have it. Motion carries. Alright, getting right off into our presentations. You guys all set?
Almost there, man.
Alright. Superintendent, if you want to step on four while they're getting together, I mean, I'm pretty sure you understand technical.
Oh, no, no.
Technical is. Okay, alright, good.
I just wanna do a couple of quick introductions again. We have Melody Hines, one of our Board of Trustees, Ms. G and Ms. Babbiak that you saw, and Mr. Furka. What makes Wayne Westland Community special is our staff, but most importantly, it's our students. As you saw them out front and center, our kids make us go. So we have a saying, we develop champions in the classroom, in competition and in life. So I'm gonna go through this presentation and then I can field any questions, anyone has at the end. We have two comprehensive high schools, one alternative high school. Probably one of the hidden gems in southeast Michigan, which is our Career Tech Center. It's phenomenal. We have offered 19 skilled trades and programs there where our kids can get industry certification and college credit. We have three middle schools, 10 elementaries and an early child center. This year, we launched pre-K programs in five of our elementaries. This next year, we'll have them in all 10. We believe we need to start our kids sooner to get them out made, especially with the pandemic to school. It's gonna make us unique because a lot of school districts don't have transitional kindergarten. So we wanna start our kids earlier. We're around 9,500 kids right now in our school district. We have 1,100 staff and again, our district stretches.
So we're starting in small building blocks to start to do that, just so we expose our kids. Because one of the things, and this isn't just Wayne Westland, but across the state, I think in the last decade, we don't expose our kids early enough. And so we wait till they get to the high school, but in a lot of cases, they don't know what they want to do. And they're trying to figure it out. If we can start to drill down into the elementary and middle, we can help them as we're making these decisions. So then they can take advantage of our career tech classes.
Mayor Prota?
My favorite school, Hicks Elementary School is one of my favorite schools. And I want to try to keep the good work up.
All right. Yes, I can say, I know back when I went to high school, it was a co-op. Do you remember that?
Yes.
And this sounds like this is like it was back when I went to high school. I'm not going to say that, but how long ago that was. But will there be elective or will the student be able to pick one of those classes to take?
What they can do is they can split some of their schedule and take two hour block classes in a particular area. One of the other things I didn't mention, we're waiting for Representative Talib last March to put together a proposal for work-based learning. So we're waiting for the grant to kind of drop. What we're going to do with that is have internships and kind of like the co-op, the work-based learning, but pay our kids. So if they decide they want to get in medicine and work at a hospital, maybe the hospital can't pay for that internship. In this proposal that Representative Talib put together, we're going to be able to draw from that to pay that kid while they're in that work-based learning or internship, which we think is huge because I was just talking to Ms. Hines. And one of the things we talked about, a lot of times, we want to expose our kids to opportunities because they might decide, I don't want to do that. And in the back end, they're going to save themselves time and money from going down that road. Sometimes I think our kids wait too long because they haven't had the work-based learning experience. And I think that's so crucial.
So will that, in order to graduate, would they have to do one of these courses?
No, no, they, these are just elective within their schedule.
Okay.
But generally, if they enter in a program, it's a two-year program. What we want the kids to do is to be able to get college, because we have articulated college credit and industry certification. So when they start to graduate, they're graduating with skills and industry certification and college credit. Because again, like I tell the kids, that's like a scholarship in itself. Because if you can knock a year or two years out of your kind of pre-rack undergrad, when you're going, it's going to be a lot cheaper for you and your family. It's not to mention you'll be able to target other scholarship money. Because you don't want to be in debt once you kind of take your next step.
Right, because I know when we did our co-ops in the summertime, we worked at different locations, wherever field you was going into. So I worked at schools, some people were working automotive. And at the end of the graduation, some of us got hired into that.
Yeah.
So that's really good. I just want to let you know that my grandson is graduating from, what's that, Wayne Memorial. And he's going to Eastern, so.
Oh, zebras. Tell him to look into that scholarship because they're going to, they're going to line up. They said even kids that don't qualify for the true EMU scholar, they have presidential scholarships that they're going to match our kids to.
Okay, I will, I will, thank you, thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, hold on just one second. So, Chief?
Susan asked about, do you still have an upward bound?
Yes, we do. And as a matter of fact, I'm glad they brought that up. We've had it for 40 years at Wayne Memorial High School. And one of the neat things is our kids get to step on every college campus in the state of Michigan in person. So they tour around. We're looking to target because we're in a new grant cycle for the head upward bound program. He had John's one high school, so we'll see how that goes. But we're hoping we can get it there too.
That's awesome, awesome.
He's awesome.
Thank you, again, and I hope you guys take me up when we start to get through this latest surge, even in the springtime come, and I'll take you on a tour of our fruit tech and our buildings. And you can eat lunch, our kids can make us, our culinary students actually prepare meals.
All right.
So you can have lunch there.
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor Wimbley, thank you. And again, one last time, just want another round of applause for the Hicks. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Doctor. Thank you so much to all the parents, of course, that stayed out a little while later. Thank you guys so much for coming back, coming out. Have a good night. All right, let's jump right into our next presentation, Nerds Express. Dustin Barlow.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And Dustin, make sure you speak up and then introduce yourself to everybody too, please.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. So pretty much I just wanted to do a quick presentation to kind of show you a state of the IT, where we're at, some of the challenges we face, where we plan to go, and what we got accomplished so far. The first slide here, we basically, as we developed our relationship with Inkster, we started developing an internal team that was responsible for servicing the actual city. So as everyone, and just to make sure everyone is familiar with the actual team that's servicing, as we kind of start at the top, so ASA has been the dedicated support individual that's been here. Underneath them, there is a couple backup individuals, Edward as well as Darius. Tony Dooley is also an Inkster native. He's actually responsible for the structure cabling and any type of other infrastructure projects we may get involved in. He has a team underneath him of three or four individuals that would be participating in any other projects we've done. And also, we do have our account executive, Dean, who's actually here with us today. So he's been responsible for the day-to-day communication interfacing the different departments, any customer relation issues or anything of that scenario. Mr. Johnson's been responsible for that. And I just want to make sure everybody knows him as well because he did interface with a lot of the team, the staff here. The last person is Tony Robertson, who's not with us tonight, but he's actually part of the client relationship team with Dean. They work kind of together to make sure that the satisfaction is met with the actual city. So let's jump right to some of the challenges that we faced at the beginning of the contract and what we've been kind of overcoming through the first year. You know, so there was, we had a little bit of minimal documentation that was handed over to us. So a lot of the systems we had to actually either recreate or basically try to understand the logic or the networking behind, or the engineering behind a lot of the scenarios. We overcame that and through that process, we've been documenting the systems while we are making improvements to those. There has been, you know, there's been a lack of passwords. So we've been working with various vendors, various manufacturers. What we had to do to actually get access to certain systems that we needed to be able to properly service the city. There's been a lot of various temporary fixes or patches that have occurred that we had to either reverse engineer or whatever we had to do to basically convert that to a permanent solution. And there's a lot of systems that were failing in the process because there's a lot of outdated equipment. Those individuals, some on the job experience in the IT industry. I think because Nerds Express is a pretty vast company where you have a pretty broad array of skillsets that we can potentially, you know, coach. So it's a two-pronged approach for that. The goal is that we're all looking for capacity building and be able to handle more pressure. So that'd be great for them to, you know, work for Nerds Express eventually So we've got that far, there's still, we still have work to do. and have a for sure path of a career. But we've been, you know, working through that to actually make sure there is actual enterprise solution But at the end of the day, they will be employable to any company that would be able to retract their talent. with proper security throughout the city. You know, we worked alongside the police department to implement the body cameras, in-car cameras with Exxon. So that's one thing that, you know, we've have worked, you know, we are building out and, you know, we feel that Inkster would be a great candidate for that program. We actually, you know, built out the outdoor wireless solution to actually support that infrastructure, And after that, that's pretty much all I have. So just want you to hear for either questions or any open discussion. which again was, which was in a failing state. The other thing that was kind of, and I'm going to get to it a little bit later on as well, is that we did replace all the network switches. Under our standard contract, we were able to actually upgrade all the devices here that were purchased and replace them, again, some of the failing equipment as well as things that were potentially holding back some of the speed and capacity of the network. We actually cleaned up all the data closets besides the police department, which that's one left we have to do, to provide some form of organization. Because again, you know, without things being labeled, trying to troubleshoot, locate, you know, loss of connection was, you know, was almost impossible without toning every line, which would actually, you know, slow down our response time. So we were able to address, and I'll show the picture on the next slide, where we were actually able to clean up all the data rooms besides the police department, which there's still a little more, a few more systems we have to actually tweak on to actually accommodate the new network infrastructure upgrade. But that will be happening within the next month or so. You know, there's been several, we did actually, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we finally did move beyond ATT and moved to 123 net, which is providing high-speed fiber to the entire city. You know, the actually city hall seen up to almost a gigabit of extra internet speed, which is scalable. So again, that was a major upgrade as well as we were able to connect with the former redundancy across the 123 net network for every single building. And that's, again, that's happened within the past few months, besides DPS. That's one of those. We actually, another thing we did too is we actually, alongside that 123 net upgrades, we actually put in new firewalls across the city because going into here, there were no firewalls. So that was one thing that actually would slow down any potential intrusions, any potential attacks on the city network. And thank God we have never been, you know, we have not been hacked. So that's, that's one thing that we actually did implement in S and N on an enterprise scale. We did act, another thing we implemented was a help desk system. So the requests are not, you know, we were trying to make things more manageable where we could actually track all requests, see if there's any recurring issues. You know, we can all be accountable to addressing, you know, any delayed response times and making sure we have tracking and notation of everything that's been done and documenting everything that's been done throughout the network. Again, there was no form of ticketing that was in place prior. As well as, you know, we were, we were able to work out, you know, work through Microsoft to resolve a lot of the email security vulnerabilities that has previously occurred, such as spoofing and any other form of additional spamming that we've actually worked that down through working alongside Microsoft. And last thing we didn't mention too is that we are, we would, we, through having this new model
Some type of presentation or just, you know, Zoom meeting where we all get on at one time and you all explain it, you know, put the square peg in the square.
Idea of actually creating cheat sheets for stuff like that. Um, I, I, I've kind of learned over the years that sometimes a quick little snippet video has been, has done wonders. Um, such as setting voicemail passwords and things like that. Unfortunately, MFA, that was kind of done in an emergency situation because the previous treasurer's email was hacked. Um, so we had to implement that on an emergency basis, but going forward, I can assure that we will, you know, we do a pretty aggressive security change that will change the user environment. Uh, we can create some kind of, or just like you said, we toss a Zoom meeting and just say, this is, you know, make sure everyone's clear on any new standards before we implement.
Okay. Now the help desk too. I just recently got a email address where you could address them. But, um, I had no emails, so whatever, you know, I had sent before, I didn't have any way of knowing if anything had been done or anything like that.
Yep. And we would, you know, that's one thing that, um, I, I've been really pushing for it is that, cause you, you know, even the issue mentioned, right? If part of, you know, Dean's responsibility even for the account is that if there is a ticket that's showing two weeks old, we had to raise red flags, like what's going on? And, you know, when people are implementing their notes, you know, with your login, you should be able to get either email updates or just logging in and say, okay, well, this is where Ace is at on this particular issue. Um, so that's one thing we've really been just pushing to standardize.
Yeah, but it's kind of hard to do and can't get in it at all.
Yeah. And if there's any issue like that, I mean, that's what we're here for. Absolutely. And I understand it. Yeah. If you just did, just recently received it, that's, that's a mistake on our end. Um, that's been a mass medication.
And just to tell you where you're still, where you're still looking as it relates to just the overall cost for Nurse Express. We do have that on the, for Saturday's meeting.
Okay.
Entire breakdown for that, just so you can see like what was this charged for, what was this charged for? Because what we've tried to do with Nurse Express is we know that $60,000 really doesn't cover IT professionals. What we need in the city to run the operation. Actually, we need probably two people. We're running IT at the same time. Um, what we try to do is, okay, we have our IT budget in each department that's approved by the council. And, you know, we'll say to Nurse Express, okay, we need this now, we need this now, we need this hardware, we need this hardware. That's where Nurse Express is able to say, okay, we'll do this extra, this particular extra work, you know, in order to kind of like offset the cost overall to keep them doing the daily service that we do. At $60,000, so we keep that. The day-to-day fix click stuff, we keep that low as possible. Not necessarily saying that we're raising the price or something on some of the, we've done as it relates to our hardware stuff that you saw, the cleanup stuff. We give them the, you know, the first, as they're here, we say to them, can you do this versus us going out and looking for somebody else to actually do it? That's what's happened in the past. We have, you have Phineas here. Phineas would go out and hire a group of individuals to do the work versus, you know, being able to do it themselves.
He was only one person.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying. So that's kind of what we're dealing with right now, even with Nurse Express. It's like, go ahead.
To be absolutely fair, I do not have these issues with Phineas.
Yeah, for sure. I hear, I hear you loud and clear. I hear you loud and clear. And I'm just, I'm just talking through with you as you're raising those issues. So letting you know how we're addressing them, we're working towards them.
But just, just clarify me, that's not double dipping when the person doing the work is getting the equipment and charging the price? That's not, I mean, there seems to be something, um, convoluted there. No?
Uh, I wouldn't necessarily think so. This is based, you know, this overall again, just keeping the continuity of who's doing the work. And that was the problem even with Phineas leaving. It sounded like you could talk to him because talking about Ubiquity, we've been waiting for the Ubiquity passwords for the last year when he left, so.
Yeah, I asked about Ubiquity, Ubiquity a while ago because I read it and one of the, the things we have. But that's, that's, that's not the here nor there. It's, it's, like I said, we are fiduciaries. So anytime somebody spends more money than they're supposed to, it's, we're supposed to be the checks and ballots. And so if this happens, then we have to say, why did it happen? And just like I asked him if this was documented somewhere? And he said, not necessarily, but I'm sorry, I'm come from the old school. Everything should be documented.
Yeah, I would do 100%. I think when he was asking about the documentation, it was more so, uh, as it relates to the state pricing versus his retail price or his delivery price.
And I welcome, you know, you come back with a quote, if I submit a quote and compare the two, I mean, usually that's happened in the past, I would make sure we, you know, we were even lower. I mean, it's just, it's just additional service, you know, I do. Not to mention even our, um, extra work, like if we're bringing in another resource from our team, to, you know, to implement something like wifi, um, our rate for that has been substantially discounted just because of the relationship.
Can you speak a little bit further to that? Because, you know, just from me, my understanding was that once we got one, two, three net here in the city of Easton, and I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm not trying to step on you, just trying to help navigate through it. We got one, two, three net in the city of Easton. So my expectation was, was that we'll all sit here right now, everybody on their devices to get on wifi and everybody, you know, at high speed moving. But what you were saying is actually two phases to it that we didn't even think about. And we're not able to get on wifi because last time that we were here Friday, I think it was Friday, you were guys doing an adventure meeting Thursday. You couldn't get on wifi. And I called you and I'm like, what's going on? Cause I know everything for me is hardware. But we don't have wifi. And what was, what was your answer?
So because, you know, one, two, three net is an internet provider. They provide fiber. They're no different than Comcast, AT&amp;T, or anybody else that's out there. But they're just solely responsible for bringing the fiber line to the building, or they call it the D mark. From the D mark on to the facility, that's your local internet, um, or your lo- local network. So.
Like a router or something in that case?
Well, no, they're just bringing service in. We, you know, they stopped there. We, we've implemented the actual firewall and router that protects the outside world from intruding into the internal network. But going back to your original question, you know, just because the internet's coming in, something has to, an antenna or some type of device has to be able to push the internet signal out wirelessly from one, two, three net. That's what you call wireless access point. Um, it's no different than, you know, Verizon owns this, this network, but there's little towers all over the place that are broadcasting, you know, 5G or LTE, whatever the case is, cell signal so that when you walk around your cell phone, you have a simultaneous connection. You're not dropping calls. That's the wireless mesh network works in the same capacity. Where if I'm walking around, if I was to build this out the right way, where we had a wireless infrastructure in place, if you're on your laptop walking around, you're not disconnecting, reconnecting. It's just a simultaneous wireless sign, um, connection. And there's devices that look like little boxes that are pushing internet signal back down to your device. And they'll be placed throughout the facility so that we have optimum coverage.
And do we have that here now?
No. No, I think it was when we talked with Troy, there's like maybe three devices. Uh, that's not enough to cover the entire building. And not to mention, that goes back to the whole thing about the improper documentation. And it's, again, it, it's, the device has to match what the, the current standards are. Like I think now the latest standard is wifi six. Your new iPhones, they take advantage of new technology. Things of the past don't necessarily have that level of, of, um, basically that level of, uh, uh, antennas that can provide us the latest spectrum of wireless.
And back to Councilwoman Wylie, as you said earlier, as it relates to, she had those problems. I would say the same thing as it relates to just the wifi connection. I didn't necessarily have those problems until we decided to upgrade the network and the hardware and all that stuff. So what happened?
Well, there's got, both had to talk. You know, if you bring in the latest fiber, whenever you bring the latest firewall, there's other, um, infrastructure devices that have to match with it to accommodate newer standards. And that's what I've mentioned is that, you know, that wireless infrastructure has to be built out to get the type of response that you want. Now, when the way AT&amp;T was set up was totally different. You know, they were using what you call layer two to connect between city hall and DPS. Well, when that went away, there's nothing facilitating that connection. So how is it getting back to city hall? Well, that's something else had to be built out to make that a reality.
Go ahead, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
And since you brought up AT&amp;T, I understand we were getting some discounts from them that we don't get anymore. Can you advise what happened to those?
That I'm, you know, I haven't really gotten involved with the billing matters with AT&amp;T. I know we still using them for the phones.
Yeah, we still get those discounts for the phone, but as it relates to just the wifi overall, we, because we were using it for wifi too, you know, for our internet provider.
Yeah. And I, I, I believe they were, that we had services at different buildings that we weren't even using anymore, which is why. So we, we corrected all of that.
Yes. And they, it was like a, 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 not a reimbursement, but like a rebate.
Okay.
I, I want to piggyback on that, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Cause that's what I asked about during the budget talk, when they said on the Excel spreadsheet, we lost a hundred to $13,000 discount. Which was, you know, cause AT&amp;T isn't, any corporation, they don't cut a check. They just gonna, you know, gonna discount. So I think that's what she was asking about. It wasn't a, it was supposed to be a rebate, like you said, not a discount per month because it was literally a error because if you don't call them to say, we don't have these services no more, they don't cut it off. They just keep billing you for it. And so somewhere in there, you know, that had happened in the far past, you know, and it had got caught going through billing now. So I think that's what she was asking about, because I was curious about that as well. Um, and I actually had talked to Dustin about that at one point in time. Uh, you know, this was way after the budget talks. Where did it go or why didn't they come through with their promise? You know?
I think they were trying to keep the business. I don't know if you guys recall, we were deliberating about one, two, three net. And then Phineas had came back with like three different quotes and AT&amp;T was one of those. Saying that they were going to discount our services down so much and it just didn't match up still for what we were paying one, two, three net, but don't quote me on that. But I think that's what happened. But I think we need to dig into that a little bit more. So if you could help me with that, we need to probably just dig back into that and figure that out.
Yeah, we can sit down and talk about it for sure.
One needs to sit on the table, we need to get that.
Right, absolutely. Cause I, and since you brought that up, I mean, that, that could be a possibility, but that, that was part of if they renewed their contract with us or something like that. Cause I know now we only use them for telephone service. We don't need them as our internet service provider because one, two, three net is here and they have a redundancy option. But like Dustin said, it's always true to have a primary and a secondary in case the primary goes solely out. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to yield back to Councilman Wylie. So I, I got my questions too.
I'm gonna stop here. Um, I think. Looking at the notes here. Yeah, I, I will yield before someone else has.
Okay. Yeah. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as far as, I'm, I'm glad you brought up that in our budget talk is Saturday or budget retreat, whatever I put on my calendar ass on the 22nd, uh, that we're going to be talking about the fiscal year costs versus what they've actually been paid out because of reimbursements and things like that. I think one of the things that would help us on the vendor reports when we're looking at is some type of, uh, thing that would distinguish between the two, the actual paycheck that's going to them for their services versus equipment reimbursement?
And me and Dustin, we did talk about, I totally agree 100%.
Right. Cause I know when I had asked the treasurer for a year today balance, he gave it to me. I was like, well, this is over what we voted on. So, all right. Um, and then I know the contract is up for renewal because once, I'm sorry, Nurse Express came in under a emergency capacity. And then the contract was brought before us, but the council was split on that decision. And then you had to break the tie. And the contract has since, uh, expired. And of course we're on a month-to-month basis. But I believe just for better clarity, we need a more in-depth contract because I understand like one, But I believe just for better clarity, we need a more in-depth contract, because I understand like one sentence, just like I might say um, a NIC card, I'm like, yeah, I need a new NIC card, don't nobody ever know what a NIC card is, right? You know what it is, I know what it is, but it's an acronym, and everybody's sitting there like, what is he talking about? But it's N-I-C-C-A-R-D, I see some people's face like, what did you just say? And so we need, in those blurbs, like at the contract, when RFP goes out, we're looking at it, we need to be more in-depth and thorough, so we're looking at different rates and stuff too, so if there's gonna be overtime for, say, you work nine to five Monday through Friday, but Saturday is a different rate, Sunday's a different rate, and those two, three AM calls in the morning, I understand your time is valuable. And I understand we have to keep public safety going too, but we need that so we can see it and know um, when we're doing budget amendments and voting on the new budget, just like we were just doing for our religious institutions. We look at the cost that we spent out last year on Comcast or DTE, and we try to figure out, okay, next year, do we need to increase this budget, so we can let the whole church know, like, look, this is the budget you'll be voting on versus, oh, you know, we spent a hundred and fifty dollars the last five months, because it didn't snow, and it wasn't cold. But next year, we get a blizzard, so we go way out of budget. I think that, that would be very helpful, because I would be honest, I was one of the persons that voted no, cause I just wasn't satisfied with what was sitting here before me to vote on at that particular time, just because of my background in telecommunications, and I just wanted to see more.
No, that's not a problem at all, and I think it was because of that emergency basis, we just put it together really quickly, but I agree, we can definitely make it more thorough and in-depth.
Great, um, and uh, I guess the final thing is, like, my laptop right now is on the City Hall employee wifi, and I can't browse out at all. So I don't know if that is something with the firewall, if it's just blocking it from talking to the outside world, or what's going on, usually I can, and I was here on Thursday, I was actually meeting with the mayor and some staff. Uh, when the pension board was next door, and they couldn't get on either, and I just didn't know. I would like to see, just to echo the sentiments of the public wifi portion, because when you go to the House of Representatives, or McDonald's, or Tim Hortons, there is a, the, the the, well, the business wifi will be invisible to the visitor. But the public wifi will be public, and it'd be on a timeframe, you might only be able to get on for twenty-four hours, and you have to renew and accept the new terms. So I would like to see that in our city buildings, because if you got people sitting in lobby, the police department, I can't say the library, cause that's a separate entity, but City Hall, fire departments, so on and so forth, those persons, like any of us, would just be able to hop on the public wifi and not get access to any private stuff, and not get the top speed internet, but enough to be able to browse out, do anything you need to do as far as anything, you know, if you're just trying to Google the mayor's phone number or something like that, you'll be able to do so.
Yeah, and, and, and that, that was definitely, um, you know, maybe we just talked about that, that was definitely on my initiative list, um, you know, and to your point, uh, that's exactly what we proposed, we, you know, and I could touch you as a tech. You, you know, we did propose on the guest side, you know, the layer, you know, layer two isolation, where they, they can never see the internal network. They're on their own little private V LAN, that's definitely just off in their own world. Um, but we can set the capacity of how much of that internet use they can, they can use. Not to mention anything they do, I don't care if they're using Netflix, or anything high, you know, high definition YouTube, whatever. It would never slow down a live stream event, because we can segment the network in that capacity, so that was something we talked about, um, I've been, I definitely pushed, and we, we started a little, you know, we started, so we started to do a little bit of work at the Parks and Recs, we did some of the police department, in the courthouse. Um, City Hall, we just haven't gotten there, but that's part of what we've been pushing for as well, so that's, you know, great initiative.
All right, um, other than that, I'm, again, I'm happy to hear about the railroad progression. Uh, cause I know you all said that was a issue, so I'm glad that that's still in motion, and I know Mr. Business would be very happy once it's all up and going.
I'll be happy too. It's been a pain, so yeah, that's, I mean, that, that's, that's excellent, because uh, they did give us actual install date, which is great, from one to three net directly, so once that's done, we can get this temporary, well, we actually got Comcast now to hold them over, which was even better. Um, but it's just still not part of that, that main city enterprise network, which you wanna get to. Um, get them all the one, two, three, and the high street fiber, so he's been suffering a little bit, so we're getting through it.
Just out of curiosity, because um, working in that field before, and knowing sometimes there's other things out there that are remote that tie into the network. In the future, I don't know if it's something immediate that could happen, with our water bases, they probably use internet to send out alerts and reports back to DPS, or to engineers, and things of that nature. Is it possible, or is, are they already tied into the one, two, three network, the three water ba-, or is it two or three water bases we have in the city? All, I guess all of them there? Are they tied into one, two, three net by any chance?
Not currently, but we can, we can make that happen, that's, that's not a problem, there is technology.
They can make everything happen with a cost. Talking about the other additional fiber stuff, I mean, uh, wifi stuff, I think, in hindsight, for us, we're trying to get to the twenty-first century. Because, I mean, all of us on this panel, we know that, you know, uh, all of our IT people, from Brett through, to, to Phineas, the company between Phineas and Brett, we were just keeping things moving, piecing things together, you know, and Phineas had did a whole dossier as it relates to what he needed as it relates to bringing our capacity up into the twenty-first century, so it's a cost to all this stuff. And I think in hindsight, one thing that we didn't do a, a good job at is looking at the plan and making sure that, you know, we didn't run into the railroad issue with, you know, Mr. Business, and, you know, now they're down. Now we gotta put them on Comcast, you know, uh, the, and here, you know, with the new network, we still got the old stuff, and all the old hardware stuff, so it can't connect, and it was wifi, so, but that's a cost, that's included with all that stuff, so we need to be mindful of that, unless we can get you to do it for free.
I'll do what I'm capable of. And I've been firm with that with any IT group, I'll do what I'm capable, knowledgeable of, or if you give me the rundown, and I'm working with you to save the city some money, I'll do that, but you can't just throw me out there by myself and say run, and then blame Steve on city council night, when it ain't worked. All right, I yield the floor, thank you.
All right, sir, I saw, anyone else? I know this is a hot topic, now I understand this, because uh, one of the things in there, Dustin, we, we had to have like a come with Jesus meeting, candid conversation, like councilwoman Wiley was saying, she couldn't get her emails, no other people, they just couldn't get into the different stuff, so we started just checking the system, so we could see exactly what's happening, so not only we hold them accountable and responsible, of course, you know, with us, we're being held accountable and responsible. So one of the biggest things that he was saying to me was that, you know, we need more people, you know, so, um, I know that, I, here, I come break up. I know that, uh, you know, that's something that we need to talk about, so that's why you don't see anything before you tonight, I was gonna do a presentation. I know that we gonna have some more conversations with this budget, and looking at, you know, just operations, I want, you know, all of us to start chiming in as most as we possibly can, you know, just to help out, making sure we do everything we possibly can to get services out to our community, so I would say probably next month, after kind of talking to you all again, and going back and forth, and talk to Dustin, and see exactly where we can get to. We may even go back out, be it, or decide we have to bring, you know, people in-house, but it's just something that I wanna put on your radars, you have out there, understand where we at, okay? Councilwoman Williams?
No, I, I, I get one, but I, I don't know, we, we just switch, other word, we, we just switch another company already, right?
As, as it relates to what?
Okay.
Internet?
Yeah.
Yes, we, we were one, two, three net.
Okay, uh, I ain't really got, I, you know, I got my own personal equipment that I use for council. You know what I'm saying, they would kind of help, help me with it, but then, you know, it, it, it is still ain't right. That, you know, we told her we got a laptop, we never got it, so I know, I know I was in a budget frame, but I, I need them to hit my, my, my program right in my machine, okay?
Dustin, I think that you need to.
You know, it's that two guy, and they still ain't got you.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, make sure everybody, yeah, has my direct number, you know, so that, there's.
Cause if I get my setup right, then I, you know, I, I don't worry about it, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, just call me anytime, and I, I'll make sure we.
Has anybody else not got their laptop?
There's three people.
There's three people, I got mine.
Now, we got a laptop, you know, we.
Well, you should, it's in your book, I don't know why we haven't.
When they were asked, only certain people said.
Yes, they were, I remember, and then it came back, yeah.
Well, I didn't ever push it, because they like the ones that got the laptop, I think I will probably.
We'll work through that.
Yeah, I guess, I, I know there was a talk about it, it was several months ago, and I, we were going back and forth about.
We'll, we'll work through that as a body, as we work.
Mr. Mayor, final question?
Please.
Oh, as far as Microsoft licenses, I know the licenses are kind of sort of supposed to come under our domain, like how we all have city email addresses. And I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, cause like what, what Councilman Williams is saying, if he doesn't necessarily have Microsoft Office at home, wouldn't he have the capability of logging in with his city credentials and be able to access?
No, no, if you, if you go into the uh, three sixty-five portal, you're, as long as you have the actual license that includes the actual programs, you can.
I got license for uh, one of them.
It'll be office three sixty-five.
Office, office twenty nineteen.
That was just an example, I don't wanna confuse nobody, that was just an example, I was just.
I got license for that, 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 but that's what I had put on that machine, office twenty nineteen.
You should be using the three sixty-five through the city.
Well, when he's saying this, it's personal devices, we don't have a city laptop.
Got it, okay.
He's talking about through the city, you were. So, it, it, that'd be something we should all talk about on the Zoom.
Yeah.
Cause the reason I ask, if I logged out of my city device, and I logged in on a different city device, I should have the same accesses. Or even if I did, which we shouldn't do, but I logged in on a personal device under my domain, I should have those, that's why I was just asking. Uh, because at one point in time, it just had logged me out on here, you guys got me back up and going, but I know like we're Councilwoman Howard and Councilwoman Wiley, then they experienced that same thing.
And it still, it still pops up.
So it's not on the cloud?
Well, if the, if the data is stored, so there's two different things, if you're part of the city domain, there is a roaming profile, which means that wherever you log in within the city, your files will pop back up, if you're not utilizing that, or, you know, and again, it's, to your point, it's not really recommended that we do a personal device in that capacity, but if you have a OneDrive, which is included with your city subscription, those files are on the cloud, if you save them there, which is, I would highly recommend versus enrolling a personal device onto the network. So that would be the route to go.
Mr. Mayor, maybe one day we could all have a study session for IT.
I would welcome that, I mean, that's something we can all talk about to make sure that we are, you know.
But this includes the license, the word, and office three sixty-five, cause we say if I'm not licensed to that.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to now, if, if there's a situation where you're not licensed, that's something I could fix for you, but that is supposed to be included with your, your license from the city. Yeah, and if there's, if this is not working, that's something I can definitely, you know, work with you guys.
Definitely, we, we need to have a study session, so we definitely figure out, let's, let's talk on Saturday. We're talking about, and all that stuff, we're talking about dates. In between time, I'm directing, make sure that you follow up each council person.
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, here and now, thank you so much, Dustin, have a good rest of your evening, we appreciate you taking.
Appreciate the, thank you, thank you.
All right, we were right along. Consider agenda? Well, this, the movement properly supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just have a motion carried, boards and commissioners. Uh, we said that we would be bringing boards and commissioners to every other council meeting, is your opportunity, if you have any. Permission, we need to fill in on any boards.
Okay, um, I have a vacancy in Parks and Recs. But as of right now, I'm not able to find anybody who wants to serve on this commission, on this committee.
Okay.
So I'm asking anyone in my district that wants to serve on Parks and Recs Commission, just give me a call. Because I'm calling the people that I have phone numbers to, and they're either busy, or, so I'm still trying to get that vacancy filled. Yes. On a text? Uh, I might not, can you forward that, can she give me a call? Okay, okay, because if you've sent me something, and if I didn't get it, I normally respond then. Okay, okay, just give her, have her give me a call, okay? Let me send the text, and I can give her a call.
Okay, anything else, Mayor Proton?
Uh, that's it for that.
All right. I'm sorry, I was Councilman Chisholm, next, and then Councilwoman Wiley.
Yeah, I just have a question, Mr. Mayor, um, on one of your mayoral appointments on the Parks and Recs Commission. Uh, Shana, but she had reached out, and I told her to contact either the clerk or your office, so I just wanted to make sure, confirm that she had did that.
I haven't talked to her yet, I look forward to her calling, it is a mayoral appointment, so I look forward to her.
She might have said, she might have sent an email, I'm not sure.
Okay, I haven't seen one from her today.
Okay.
We have a city clerk follow back with her, and then, you know, get her in the office.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, hold on one second, sir, Councilman Chisholm, you, you done?
Yes, I'm on second.
All right, Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, two things, um, there needs to be another mayoral appointment to the Police and Fire Pension Board.
Yes.
Uh, they brought that up this time, and also just an inquiry as to is there someone assuming the leadership role in the beautification committee? Yeah, it's gonna be hard to replace.
No games here, so I know we're gonna be definitely in good hands, with Dave Henderson still working, at the same time, I know that we need to find the right person.
Right, just the contact person who will disseminate the information to the rest of the, uh.
Yeah, for sure, um. And that's a hard one, I know that you guys, you know, we have to put our heads together on that one, I mean, somebody's gonna actually take the reins out of this, Gabe, you gonna step up on that? Well, you got a lot going on already. Come on. This is important, I know you got.
Hello, family, glad to see y'all, you know, and hope everybody is well and doing well. Yes, you know, and I I definitely wanna say something, you know, Toni Bell, and she was so dedicated in so many things to make Easton a beautiful place, and I wanna say this, she would always say, we would talk about visitors coming here, business coming there, and all that, would track business. You know, the eyes is a beautiful thing, that we, what they see determines sometime what they wanna do, you know, what we wanna do, you know, as far as business go. So she tried to keep this place clean, she worked hard, she worked hard and all that, and I miss her dearly.
Yes.
She worked me hard.
That's what we need another person to go work.
Yeah, so I guess I had to step up, you know, I, I'm not I've never been in a leadership position, but I've always been that, you know, that I say that angel on the shoulder, those who are in that leadership position to put, put love in, and always understanding what God wants us to do.
Yes.
So that would be my purpose in life, and I guess I'm gonna have to, you know, take up the mantle and, and be in that position. I just wish she had left me some notes. You know, yeah, but I, I will, I will fulfill that.
We really appreciate that, so we'll, we'll note that, and we'll get you as much support as we possibly can.
We always need to, you know, cause we, we have done a lot, you know, far as beautification, and hoping that, you know, the eyes, that the people who wants to do business in our city, look at it and say, okay, they trying to keep this place nicer.
Yeah, we gonna keep it moving, man.
Okay, so.
Thank you, sir.
I love you, family.
We love you too.
Okay, and uh.
And, and let me say, thank you, sir, I appreciate you. Uh, as it relates to the mayoral appointment, I just need to have, uh, my person submit their resume and uh, fill out the app for the clerk, so I'll make sure I have that on the next one.
Okay.
I, I know that that's very important, I'm there in the audience tonight, so they'll definitely become before you soon. All right, anybody else? Okay, here, here and uh, as it relates to the Easter Housing Commission, you have your package, you have resume for James Thomas. And he is here in the audience tonight, and I'm recommended him being appointed to the, the Easter Housing Commission. I get a motion and support for that.
Some of.
Move to support it, Mr. Thomas, would you come to stand for a second? The thing is important, this is a very important position. You had a chance to talk to the director over at Housing, Aaron Cooper. Of course, you know all the directors, I don't know if you wanna say anything to this body. Of course, you know all the directors. I don't know if you want to say anything to this body, but, uh, we do have your resume in front of us. It's in your packet, you guys.
Just thank you for the opportunity, um, you know, as you know, I'm, I'm out in the city every day, um, serving the people. Housing is a very important issue, concern of citizen, resident general. So, um, thank you for just for the opportunity to be able to serve the people of Inkster for the most part.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate your service and your continued service. We do have a motion and support. Any other discussion? Here and none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, thank you, sir. Congratulations. City clerk will be following up with you morning tomorrow. Thank you so very much. Move right along. New business? City clerk?
First item on new business is for this body to consider approval to authorize the contract extension with GFL, Green for Life, our current trash hauler at a new rate of eleven twenty-five per unit, per month with a two and a half percent increase annually for the next five years, ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
And just for the record, the, 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 the current number is fourteen dollars and how much do we know? Uh, Mister Bibbins, is it fourteen thirty? The current number, fourteen twenty-eight? Is fourteen thirty the current number? And they're proposing to go down to eleven, eleven dollars and then the percentage was three point five? Okay, I just wanted to note that in the motion. Is there a motion? Yes, sir. Did we table this item? Is there support? Any discussion on that? All right. All right, roll call. Okay, good, I got you. All right, no roll call needed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, this item will be tabled until hopefully the next meeting, which is, what is the next meeting date, February?
February seventh.
All right, perfect. Moving right along, item B.
Item B is consideration or authorizing some of one vacant parcel located on the west side of Spruce Street between Carlisle Street and Beach Street for five hundred dollars.
Which place? There's support. There's support? Remove and properly supported, any discussion? You're not called. Here and none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. I just want to do roll call all day long. You'll be here all night. All right, item C.
Item C is, um, for this body to consider authorizing administration to enter into a partnership with AAW Infrastructure Partners L three C for an EB Mobility Program.
What's your pleasure? So move, Mr. Chair, there's support? There's support? Our motion fills. Item D.
Item D was, um, the matter discussed in closed session. It was actually a matter of Blackwell versus Wimberly to consider accepting the recommendation of the city attorney.
What's your pleasure?
Remove.
Support.
Move and properly supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carried. All right, this brings us to public participation. Do we have any one city clerk? You have any? You don't have any for public participation? All right, moving right along, city clerk? Oh, we should, uh, no sheets? Oh, we had some last. Okay, I'm sorry, man. I'm sorry, man. We had some last time. What happened this time? Okay, with the public, okay. Did you want to speak? I have no problem with you speaking. Did you, did you need to speak now? Yeah, so I'm just speaking with the city clerk. We have a sign up sheet out front and right next to it is the public participation sheets. Is that what you were saying?
No, on the sign up sheet.
You just say if you want to. Oh, if you want to make comment, okay. So we're just doing things a little bit different as it relates to the, the protocol coming in for COVID. Is that what we're talking about? You sign in basically and then you say right on there if you want to. Okay, but we do need for documentation, so what we'll do is we'll make sure we still had a public sign in sheet, okay? That, that actual sheet for people to make comments, individual comments, okay? All right, then. So let's just say this through the chair, anybody want to speak? Please state your name, please, for the record. Someone to the podium to make your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and the council.
Good evening.
And the city of, of the community, of the city of Inkster. I just want to say that I've been attending these meetings probably ever since the mayor been in office. And I have gained a lot of knowledge from you guys. So you guys are doing a very good job. I have, uh, I have friends that have businesses in the city of Detroit. And when I tell them about my experience, they blown out the water like, wow, I want to come to Inkster. And, and pack up my stuff in the city of Detroit and come to Inkster because they are more welcoming than the city of Detroit. So I just want to let you all know that you're doing a good job. Keep, keep up the good work. Your, your, everything that you're doing is not going unnoticed, okay? When I speak of Inkster, I'm not speaking, oh, they, 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 um, arguing there. No. I'm speaking good things about the city of Inkster. You guys are doing a good job. Keep up the good work. I appreciate you all. Have a great day.
Thank you so very much.
You bet, Hardy.
Anyone else? Please state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, I was, uh, before you last time and I really appreciate the, the, uh, the things that was just said by a previous resident of the city of Inkster. Uh, I also, I love to give positive feedback. I don't know if anybody's ever noticed that, but I love giving positive. Our city is not unlike most cities. We just have maybe, uh, different numbers. I love the way this council, this mayor listens. And as, as I was talking about, uh, what our councilwoman was saying, I love hearing that you're listening to your constituents. I love hearing that you're fighting for your constituents. Yes, you're in leader positions. You're in leadership positions, but you are hearing the voice of the community, bringing it to this body. And I thank you guys. I'd love being a part of the village of Inkster. I just do. There's so many places that we here can live, but we choose to be in Inkster. Thank you guys. And I'd like to just commend you guys for doing the work that you do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, please.
Hello. Glad to see the council and everybody, the citizens back in the, in the chambers. I really had, uh, I wanted to take a second just to say to my councilwoman, Mister Gina Washington, the good job she's doing over in our district, district two, far as our gas stations and things like that, just really being attentive to making sure that, you know, what's, you know, you have folks who are nice and making sure that having things nice in the lots and, you know, with us having so much, uh, extra traffic and the human thing, just being attentive to that. And I actually, all, all, everyone throughout the city just continue to do what they can do. As far as our mayor, our DPS, you know, our police is working out here, it is doing, do the best they can, although we have a lot of adversities. I know that we can get it all done if we work together. And then to mother, to my brother here, brother D, I want to make sure that we get together for this youth baseball. That's one thing that's, I've been adamant about getting our elite baseball back in Inkster. Everybody knows some, you know, we've already gone through this COVID thing and it's been tight with kids up in the house. We need to try to find more, uh, more just community, uh, more activities that they can get together with socially, you know, with, uh, with all the things going on. But one thing I would like to do is do whatever I can do to help get this youth baseball going back in the city of Inkster. I don't care. We have to start with four teams. Two teams is enough folks around here. Maybe get some community groups, maybe seed the P, the Cobras or whoever around and, you know, the different church groups and whatnot to try to get some teams together because the summer is where we lose our kids at. We already losing them right now, you know, the games and then home with the COVID and all of that, but just really just looking forward to this summer coming in. Now it's, it's, uh, January, you know, going into February and baseball gonna be coming quick and we don't want to be left out with that. And on top of everything, I just want to say, you know, happy new year to everybody. God bless y'all. Stay up.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, Hardy Robb is his name. You're supposed to state your name for the clerk for the record. That's what you. Hardy Robb, I'm not sure. Okay. And, and, and again, forgive, forgive us as it relates to just the, the protocol, just making sure everything is together. Of course, is our second time back into the chamber, so um, just speaking on that before, uh, we go around to council comments. Um, we're going to, just because of COVID and because of the rise in the numbers, we have to make sure that we're still taking care of our people. Um, as you can see, we, we, we have social distance measures as much as we possibly can, but if we have a hot topic or the presentation that we had tonight from, uh, you know, Westland Public School District, then we have a lot of people inside of here, you know, and, uh, you know, anxieties are high and we need to take care of one another and be responsible for one another. So uh, what we're gonna do from this body is, uh, we're going to, um, go virtual as it relates to broadcasting the meetings. Um, what we will do. You stop right. Oh. They're working on it. Okay, make sure you work on that computer, man. I don't go nowhere. You see she over every time I get in the mode, she stopping me on that computer, man. Okay, she, oh, he right there. Oh, okay, it's cold. He ain't going nowhere. Okay. All right, we, we got you. Okay, good. So, so we're gonna go virtual. We, unfortunately, and, and, well, fortunately, I, cause I, I believe in, in social interaction. I think this is good. However, um, because of, you know, the, the pandemic, we, we have to take measures. So the body is going to be in person and then we're gonna broadcast it out via Zoom, um, and Facebook. We'll still kind of do what we were doing. Um, I think a, as an additional measure, uh, Councilman Chisholm, they brought it up as it relates to just, um, our seniors. Um, we're gonna look to possibly do some type of RSVP to the meetings and let so many people in and say, okay, we only gonna have thirty people in the meeting. Then after that, we won't have any more people in the meeting, unfortunately. Go ahead, man. Did you have a question for that? Yeah, yes, yes. So we will still have, and I think that was a good thing too, because we got a lot of community, a lot of other people that were engaged, um, that typically wouldn't be engaged. Um, you know, so we're gonna still broadcast it out like we would do with Zoom and then we'll recognize them right here from the chair. So we'll manage the meeting, interact with them as long as we can interact with them. And I think Attorney Jones, is that the right way that I'm saying it?
Yes, uh, you know, not appropriately, but at the next meeting, I think we agreed that, uh, we were gonna place the amendment on the record for.
Yes, sir. Okay, all right. Now, moving off into, uh, city clerk, did you have anything for us? All right, city treasurer, you have anything for us? All right, mayor and council. Uh, let's start over, Councilman Shaw? Anything? Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And also for Michigan, that new, in middleville, they're breaking ground. I think it's going to be the pose of a gas station that's going to be on that site.
It'll be a convenience mark in gas station?
Yeah. Digging up some things, that's good. And to turn out some things, that's good. That's progress. And I think that that's one of the things in which we want to see within the city is some progress being made.
Yes, sir.
It was by this council back that allowed those things to take place, that there was no red tape. I did have a question concerning the developers, the housing developers. I know you passed, uh, you know, House Resolution for several developers to come on board to make sure that they can get houses done, redeveloped, get citizens into those houses. Now, on our part, I, I think that it's come up for that six month evaluation. So we can see exactly where they are, have they done what they supposed to do. So if you can get council finding some information concerning that, so we can gauge this to see, you know, are they ignoring what they supposed to do.
Yes, sir.
Last thing that I have is police patrol on Woodman's. And then this street, that's all I have.
Sir, Councilwoman Washington?
I did have, uh, a couple of things, uh, but my internet is not working. So I have a lot of things, a couple of things, but I just sent out an email, so. Definitely have to get with Dustin and try to fix my issue.
Okay. Okay, definitely. And again, I think it's, uh, again, a cost issue because we went to one through two, three net. And we have fiber. So Inkster is one of the ci, one of the only cities in the state of Michigan that has fiber. So we have fiber to all of our buildings. You have, I believe it's Dearborn, Westland, Inkster, I believe Wayne maybe, I believe. But, um, it's like the fastest. But if you don't have a router in your house to actually send out the signal, it's not going to hap, it don't make a difference how fast the internet is. But that's what has happened to us. So. Yes. Yeah. I know.
Is she trying to get on with wifi or did she hardwire it?
No wifi, it's not.
Yeah, there is none, so.
No, there's no wifi.
But there isn't any wifi. You need to hard, you need to plug in.
Your hotspot's not working?
No.
Oh.
I don't know.
Okay. But we definitely gonna work through those issues for you for sure. Councilman William?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have several words and comments. One, um, there's a house next to a forty-three nineteen in the veil that burnt that burn up.
Is it, uh, owned by the city or is it private?
I don't know who owns it now or what are they doing. If they don't, they're not holding up, they're not anything.
Is it forty-three nineteen or is it next door? Okay, I'll, I'll send someone over there tomorrow to see what's going on.
Another thing, the land that was purchased on Cherry Street about two years ago uh, have, have done absolutely nothing with it.
It was longer than that, sir. It was two thousand seventeen that you're talking about. Are you talking about the land that was purchased by Phil Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I, I went back. I, I just didn't want to call no names. I went back. Okay, and what I, my concern is this, that such a land supposedly sold to them for six month development. Okay, and we need to do something, but it's back there in the back of that place, full of garbage, mattresses and everything.
All right.
And it's his property and it needs to be cleaned up like that.
Okay.
Okay, um, another thing I wanted to, to bring up, I've been talking with a lot of the business people in my district. And, and, and believe me, a, a lot of them in my district love, love that district and trying to do things. I, I spent all last week and this week, I've been, have been talking to individuals, have buildings that, that wants to revise their buildings, that wants to build new construction. Okay, and I've asked them to get with the mayor, bring it forward. This council, I want to shoot it down, you know, I've seen so many things. District, district one, they have, it's a lot, it's a lot of things in district one need to be brought up. Okay, and, and that district, you know, working hard at it. And so I want to need y'all's support. I don't need, you know, uh, so much to look at. We got, we gotta look at the dollar amounts and we gotta look at exactly the opportunities that we can bring to that district. We're close to the airport. Okay, so what I'm, what I want to do is is get the full, full of support, counsel. Things that's gonna be coming forward, Mr. Mayor, they'll be coming to you and I ask that you take real consideration and bring it forward.
Yes, sir.
And so, I want to say. That's all I have for the night.
Okay, sir.
Oh, sir, thank everyone who supported the Dr. Martin King girlfriend. It's kind of, it's it's kind of ironic, right? That you appointed, you appointed Brother Thomas today and Brother Thomas was our here a matter of a recipient. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yes, sir. You're welcome, sir. Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um first, I just wanted to let you know formally on record, the virtual zone that we're talking about for the public to participate. I know it's gonna be a lot on Troy trying to man all of that as well as the council meetings. So however we do it, I am willing to lend my support. Um that way we not overtaxing our staff, because I know it's a long day on council meetings from being here sun up to shoot almost sun up again. Because we go out to the nights. Um also, Rep Talee's office reached out. They're not, and this will help with them because they asked if we were doing virtual. Because they would have tapped in that way to communicate their legislative updates. But um Tony Dunbar had asked me to communicate this to the public and the council. COVID at-home test kits are available for ordering now online at covidtest.gov, that's C O B I D T E S T S dot G O V. The household limit is four. I believe the United States Postal Service, you can also order the kits through them as well if you want at-home test kits. And I believe that is USPS.gov. Um lastly, and these messages actually came out of order, so if I say something like lastly and I keep going, sorry about that. Because I know we do that sometime in the religious community and we don't be done yet. Lastly, extension of student loan forbearance is until May. You do not expect to pay loan until after May first. Or you do not have to expect to pay your student loans back until May first. The tax season starts Monday, January twenty-fourth. Tax filing date for most is April eighteenth. Tax extensions are Monday, October seventeenth. And are off, they're uh Rep Talee's all end of, end of the Okay, bear with me. This didn't come right, but the newsletters for Rep Talee's office uh were sent out the last week of December. If you did not get one, you can request one by email or telephone. The telephone number is three one three four six three six two two zero. The last four?
Yeah.
Six two two zero. And the email address, I'll call it out first and then I'll spell it, is Rashida at mail dot house dot gov. And that's R A S H I D A at mail, M A I L dot house, H O U S E dot gov, G O V, S V as in Victor. And the final thing that I have to ask Mr. Mayor, I was thrown off because I know on the agenda, we have something about the electronic vehicle program. And I actually in the future had intended, because of these drives back and forth to Lansing, it takes a half tank of gas to get there and back. I said, well, my next purchase in a car, Lord willing, should be an electronic vehicle. Um as we move into that age, but I saw I didn't get any support, so I was just curious from my colleagues as to why it didn't get any support, why that wasn't a thing of interest right now as we move forward going into pro-earth and and you know, green. So anybody from?
My thing is the same as always. I didn't get my packet until today. I wasn't able to get on the computer, so I read nothing on it.
Oh, we had a presentation on that here at council meeting.
Yeah, I remember, but.
We had a presentation and you guys had the documentation several months ago in front of this body in the public. So that's a good, that's I I hear you, but yeah.
I agree. Maybe it's something we could look back at in the future then.
Yeah, the guy came and did a presentation for the, for us, gave us the information. It's the same information.
Yeah, I think I saw him in part during, after the vote failed. So I was just curious, because I mean.
There's no cost to the city, I think.
Yeah, that's why I was lost.
Isn't there, but with that, like I understand what you're saying, but wasn't that just added tonight to the agenda?
No.
No?
No, that was part of the original agenda.
I only saw two things. Well, well, okay. Well, that was my reason.
And and we did, and that's why I do these presentations for you, before I ask for you to vote on some, so you can have kind of dual information. That's what you guys have been saying in the past, that you don't get the information, so. Yeah, so we'll bring it back next summer. I'll, that's something that we, because there's no cost to the city. I think it's a good thing. Did you have anything else, counsel?
Nope, I'm I'm done. I yield the floor. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Watt? I'm gonna get everybody here.
All right. Okay, well, the first thing I would like to um ask about is I mentioned to you about an evaluation for our legal services. And you said I could do a um RFP, um not RFP, but a um request for council action. And I sent you an email and I, well, my computer's been down, so I don't know if you responded to me or not, that our employees have the option to either have evaluations done in private or publicly. And I thought that putting it on the agenda would make it public.
That's right. That's what we did.
So I I but I ne- I don't know, you know, so I don't know how you want me to proceed with that.
No, I think, I think that uh again, the the attorney and the clerk are the responsibility of the council.
Right.
So if you're initiating for us to do evaluation of the the um attorney, then by all means, let's proceed. We just need a mechanism. What what are we evaluating? Do you have some type of?
Well, there used to be, now I don't know if she still has it, there used to be a form that we had for the attorney as well as the clerk.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's in effect anymore, but it might be something we want to put together based on what um what issues or what uh the situation has now, because everything evolves. And uh maybe we're looking at different things now as far as services are concerned.
That's something that you would like to send to us or?
I can, I can look at it. I can look at it. That's not a problem. Okay, uh the next thing is uh I'm still waiting on my outsourcing in-house building. I was supposed to get that last Friday. I I don't know if I have to have been, haven't been on the email. Did I, did I get that?
You should have gotten it, but I've I'm I apologize. It came to me. And then I looked at it and some things just didn't look right, so I sent it back to the treasurer. He got what Plan Moran, then he sent it back to me.
Okay, but I'm getting.
I apologize. It's.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, the next thing I would like to um ask about is um in planning. Um I understood that there's a hookah lounge coming into the city or there's been a?
Planning Commission had a meeting last Monday.
Right.
Chair, will you want to speak to that? Sure.
No, it's not a matter of the hookah lounge. It's just the fact we don't have an ordinance that governs it.
Right, I think that's what we were even talking about too, Chair, so I don't know how you want to proceed with that.
However, uh.
Because I know you had mentioned it at the meeting, so go ahead.
You want to finish up your question and then we?
No, I'm just saying that a lot of these things, we we need to have a way to regulate them before we open it. And that's not.
That was, that was the thing.
You want to stop them?
For them to apply, so the the for them to apply, they had to go through the planning department. We knew that it was a specialized, special regulated land use. So they had to go through the planning commission first and then come to council. The chairperson of the planning commission said, oh, you know what? We don't have an ordinance to regulate this. We need to do something and that comes to this body. So now we need to figure out what the language is. I don't know if we get to attorney. How how does that work?
Well, I did reach out to the city of Dearborn Heights, because as you know, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights has uh multiple hookah lounges. Dearborn Heights actually has a cap on theirs. It's in the ordinance language. It's about eleven pages long. Uh if you want, because I reached out after that meeting regardless, and then I read it myself, I can forward it over to the attorney, forward it over to, I guess, the ordinance officer supervisor and forward you and the council a copy of it as well, so we can all take a look at it, see what fits for us. Uh as I had stated to the applicant, they're already in the pipeline, so I know this will be for any more hookah lounges going forward. But is anything that comes into the city that's new, of course, uh and we don't have ordinance, we do want to regulate it. And we want to make sure we have them in the right spots and don't oversaturate the city, because people have some real concerns, even when they asked about trying to turn Beaumont into a COVID-only hospital. People said, well, what about the air that they expel? Well, how's that gonna affect the community? We don't know until that happens. So uh yeah, I'll I'll forward that over tonight to everybody. And I guess however we initiate the process, whether it's through the planning commission and the planning department, or if it's through city council. I know we have to have the public hearing at the planning commission level and then two readings here at council.
Right.
And we can go from there.
Okay, and another thing, because we have so many different institutions that are springing up, you know, that we we've got a whole new normal on what used to be, you know, it's not the grocery store and the thing anymore. You're coming up with all kinds of different things that are businesses. Is there some way we can institute some sort of ordinance that says it has to follow? I mean, because just like this, you didn't know you didn't have one because it never came up. Is there any way we can do anything like that, like say, you know, this person had to go through this process before this can happen? Because this one is coming in if they want to, because it's gonna be grandfathered, because there was nothing there to regulate it when it happened, right?
Right.
So.
I think that that goes back to, Dave, you want to answer that? Because I think I can answer.
I'm not sure I'm tracking her question, but you know, there are certain permitted land uses. And when she says this one, I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Like, for instance, like a hookah lounge, is it something that we could have done it before this came in? You know, not having an ordinance on the books to regulate it. And I think that's really what it bottom line comes down to.
It does. You know, I don't know if it has any currently here, but from her question, I take it it does not. But if there is a industry that is coming on, Easter certainly has the right creative's own ordinance to govern that use of the property.
Right, but what what happens when that property, um you know, when you don't have anything on the books for it, because it just never occurred to you that it was gonna come in? There's no way to backdate or backfill that type of thing. Is there any way we can have a CATAL ordinance or no?
No, it has to be.
Specific, okay.
And planning and it's certain defined uses that are permitted and it, you know, depending on the circumstances, it's it's already.
Okay, it's fine. Okay, and the next thing is, um has anyone checked on our lobbyist, Ken Cole?
Yes, unfortunately, uh they they only gave Ken a certain amount of time to live.
I'm sorry, what?
They only gave him a certain amount of time to live.
And so are we still engaged with G GSI?
So Gary Owens has been here with us uh on several occasions now. Um he's always calling, emailing, so he's been very engaged with us. And um you know, eh at first I was kind of, you know, even when with Ken was here, we were just talking about our legislative agenda and things that we should be putting together for, as it relates to lobby. And um I didn't think that they were getting the job done. Um you know, I initiated GCSI was out when I was on council in two thousand eight. And um you know, they've only brought to the table about nine hundred thousand dollars. And you're talking about, you know, over a decade, you know, so I didn't think that they were just, you know, cutting, cutting it.
Yeah, we need a little bit more than that, huh?
For sure, so but uh uh let me say that uh Ken um unfortunately is 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 look like he's transitioning. You know, that's only God knows that. However, we pray for his family, but GCSI have been, they've been as engaged, they've been more engaged over the last, I would say, two months than anything, especially helping us with this art funding. And making sure that um we're lining up as it relates to making sure we're getting all the money that we can get out of the state of Michigan and telling us what to do and how to get to them. Uh they're the county's lobbyists as well. So that's a foothold that we would have as it relates to working with Wayne County, because we know they have three hundred and forty-six million dollars that we want to tap into as well. So um I after meeting with them several times and letting them know what our expectation was on a administrative level, I told them we need to come before the council, do a presentation, kind of tell them where we're at and all of that, what we're doing. So uh you should see that within the next thirty days.
Okay, and another thing, like so many of these properties we sold over the past year, a lot of these people have bought them. They have ended, you know, their their length of time. They were supposed to take them and they should come back to us. Now, who's staying on top of that? Is that Tracy Ann Jennings? And so, because there's a property at Incester and Hopkins. The lady bought that uh building there and has done nothing with it. All due to summer, I had to call about the grass and stuff like that. And if you're not gonna take care of it once you bought it, then once you reach that limit, so that's something we want to look at, is that house?
Totally agree with you one hundred percent. Not trying to cut you off, but we're already there already.
Okay, good.
Yeah, just because um you know, with COVID, we were giving people, you know, the benefit of the doubt. You know, unfortunately, a trobberridge right here at the corner where we were looking at, you know, doing that development, the young man got COVID and he's in serious condition. So he's not able to complete the development, unfortunately. Um these folks just disappeared, you know, doing a land sale and the transaction and all that stuff. So we're 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 with you one hundred percent.
And is there some way we can keep track of that and like?
Yes.
You know, say you, you've you've exhausted your time and the land is currently coming back to us or whatever.
And the one, one thing I can say that uh David is 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 our attorney's good at is putting reverter clauses in 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 those contracts. So they are throughout our contracts as it relates to.
That one definitely needs to be reverted.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I think that's it for me, sir.
All right, now, Mayor Proton Howard?
Hi, um speaking of what the Councilwoman Watley was just saying. I think it should go, should goes into our monthly report that we have not been getting.
Okay.
And we need to start that getting out. Um I do have.
I just want to make sure that we clear on that. It's something that the administration's agreed to give you, so you'll have that information.
Well, normally, they would, yeah, they would.
It's something that I I have to.
No, 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 no. But normally, what we used to have ha- have happened is that each department would give us how many tickets they wrote this day. We have not been getting it, so that should be maybe included in that.
I'll definitely make sure that that happened. I know I've said that several times. It's just not to my standard of what we want. Because remember, we were giving them to you for quite some time and it became redundant. And I had this council actually eat me up saying that uh, you know, yeah, I mean, you're giving us the same information every month, you know?
Well, it shouldn't be, but the same information, it shouldn't be.
Some things do stay the same.
Well, some things stay the same, but some things don't.
For sure. I agree.
Okay, um.
I'll make sure you get those.
Also, when we talk about the ordinance, and I've been meaning to say, uh we've gotten ordinances that has been updated. But I'm not sure if any of us have. Updated, like inserts, like we supposed to take some out of our order. So maybe we should bring our books up one day and we can see what you have versus us.
What are the ordinances we had though, besides the marijuana? We had some other ones?
I don't even think we got that, that got noticed. And I'm not sure, past four years, we've gotten any updates.
Wow.
That's what I'm saying. I think we far behind in that, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have uh updates for your books.
Okay.
I'll just, it's kind of simple to put them in. I can put them either in your mailboxes or if you want to bring the books, we'll update.
Okay, okay. Okay, um now we are still having our meeting this Saturday, correct?
Yes, in this, in this chamber, at eleven AM, I believe we said. Ten, I said ten. We said ten and we all said ten. Okay, ten.
Now, I know I.
Well, I got a question about that when you said.
Okay, I do know that I gave them, I I I slid this information to the mayor.
Yes.
On our personnel cost summary.
Yes.
But the thing is, is the council in our old budget books, but for the ones that's been on council, that is what we're asking for and we're not getting it in that format.
That's right.
And it's broken down by departments, but we only got it. It was the treasurer, you and us. Nobody else got that.
That's right.
Because it's got everybody's personal information on it, so therefore I'm not gonna give it to you.
Right.
I just showed it. I just showed it.
Yeah, we are, I am familiar with it, for sure.
Okay, so it should be back in your old budget books that you can look to give us the proper.
I'll make sure that you have that.
Because that lets us know how many, uh, employees are in each department.
Correct.
And it's got total wages, total fringe, total compensation.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we asking for.
That's very important. I totally agree.
But I can't give it to you because, I, I mean, I can't give it to the clerk to give to somebody because it's got personal information that nobody's supposed to get but us.
I do have that, so I'll.
And you do have that?
Yes, I'll make sure. And it's in B S and A. So we'll make sure that, uh, the treasurer spits that out and then I look at it and make sure it's what you.
Okay, so, and I need to come in here because there's some reports that we, we're still not getting this.
Whenever you want to come in.
Yes, but you know, it's been COVID, so I've been, I be around so many people at work, but. Um, if we had B S and A, isn't there, isn't there a link? To where previous treasurers used to use things in this, is it in, in, in the system where they can just do an update?
Yeah, for sure. Uh-huh. We'll be S and A. Yeah.
Okay.
The treasure green is using that too. Would you want to comment?
I found what you're looking for, uh, on the post.
Okay.
This time this week, it's under a different name.
Okay, and the, and then, um, two, okay, and then everything else that I want as far as our meeting, I emailed it to you guys. Just so we can see if we can have it before the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I was hoping. So that's what I'm going to ask everybody. If there's anything that you guys need from us as administration, we want to have it before the meeting time. But we can go through those things. Cause I know that we're talking about, you know, just suggestions on what we should be doing together. On working through the, you know, the administration and looking at costs and stuff like that. But then it's processes too. It's like, you know, Mayor Tim Proton was saying, as it relates to just making sure you guys are getting those documents that you need. It's important for you to make those decisions. Uh, give it to me so I can give it to you on time. So that's.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, good. Let me go to, uh, Councilman Chisholm first. Councilman Williams, go ahead, Councilman Chisholm.
Yes, I just had a question in regards to, you know, we had planned our meeting, um, at the last council meeting for this Saturday. And unfortunately, Chief Alex Chapman passed away and his services are like, you know, Friday night and then Saturday as well. I do intend on attending, but I just didn't want to abruptly leave in the middle of our finance meeting.
For sure.
If, you know, so I just wanted to put that out there. That's all.
Uh, that's important. I mean, I'm pretty sure all of us can be there that can be there. Um.
That's why I just wanted to keep that in our minds. That's all.
What you thinking? I'm talking to you. What you thinking? Because I'm, I'm just saying, we're all together. So what we thinking next, the following one? Oh, we know anything can happen at the same time. I know I want to be there. I don't want to, like you said, I don't want to abruptly leave. You can only imagine. It's the same time as probably our meeting.
I think we'll have to ask chief.
Right, same time as our meeting. What time? Okay.
I think you're trying to turn the microphone on or something.
Well, he's looking for that. He's actually looking for that information. Councilman Williams?
You know, I had for breakdown. We still want to have that breakdown before we have it.
You say a breakdown, break down the one. Yes, that's exactly, yes, sir. That's what we're talking about. Yes, sir. I'll make sure you have that. Yes, sir. I know you have been asking for that.
Yeah, that, that, that list is normally in our budget books. And it wasn't in there, so I'm not sure if, yeah, because the. Councilman Shaw and the older council people know what I'm talking about. All of that is in, included in our budget book, but it wasn't. So that's why I'm asking.
Why I wouldn't need it though, because I asked Heidi that too, and she's the person normally does that. So I don't know what I wouldn't, uh, but we'll make sure that's done. That's important.
And, and, and like I said.
Of all employees.
Yeah, that's not, that's not very long. That's not what I, that's not even what I wanted to have you have. This is actually geared to date. You know, it's good information, but at the same time, I wouldn't want you to look, look for.
What I.
Yeah, please go ahead.
What I provided was. Those hours for the year as well as. Our. That's what I provide.
Right.
Bank, I department.
Yeah, but that's not what we wanted. So that, that's what you got now is what we want. So we'll go over that and make sure that we disseminate that.
Yeah, and then add employees. If we have any new ones, you got to add it to that list. Everything should be updated.
Yes, ma'am. Sure. Definitely working through all of that. That'll be done. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, just one of the things, as long as we talking about formats. When we get the check register, we used to get it where we could see if the checks have been paid or not. It was open or cleared or whatever. We're not getting that anymore. Can we go back to that?
Yes, we definitely make sure you get that.
Okay.
Anything to make your life easier, that's what I want to do. That's what I'm here to do. If I'm not doing that, then just harp on it. Let's make it happen. Cause I'm not trying to be adverse or barricade you from being able to make sound decisions. That's what we're here to do. All right. Uh, hold on one second. Let's see here. Chief Chat, uh, I'm talking about Chief Chapman. Wow. Chief Riley?
Yes, um, so our visitation is Friday, the twenty first, January twenty first. From two, from two PM to nine PM. That's over at Allen Park Chapel of, uh, Martinson Family. Family and Home. That's located at, uh, one, zero, nine, one, five Allen Road. And the, uh, actual, the internment will take place Saturday, January the twenty second. Uh, at one PM at Bromley's Memorial Cemetery located at, uh, one, zero, two, zero, two. Uh, shop, S, S H O O K Road in Bromley's. And, uh, the vehicles lining up for the, uh, to go to the internment at, at the Allen Park Chapel at twelve PM.
At twelve, we'll be lining up. I don't know. I want to be a part of that. Um.
And we should cancel it.
Yeah. Yeah, if that, if that pleases this body, I would think that this is appropriate to do.
Yeah.
Alex Chapman has served our community for years in the capacity of chief with auxiliary. And he was still serving on auxiliary under our new chief, Chief Worden. So, um, we definitely want to make sure we're paying our respects as a city to, to, to him. And of course, the officers that continue to serve us now. So. Um, I would ask that we move it to the next following, what, what would be that date if that's? Twenty ninth?
That's correct.
Okay, twenty nine, January twenty nine.
Everybody in agreements to that. And then also too, you guys can get them on me, send me the stuff you need. I can send it back to you. You can, you know, make sure you have a good format, because I don't want to, I don't want to come into the meeting and we're just willy-nilly. Let's have an agenda and be on point with it. All right. All right. Just a couple of comments for me just so, uh, just for the public body. Uh, Wayne County provided the city of Easter with the community development block grant and, uh, amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, typically how the block grants work is that the city would have to reimburse, I mean, we would have to actually pay out the money. To contractors and then we'd be re, we're reimbursed or say for instance, like every year we get twenty thousand dollars for COVID. And I'm sorry, not COVID for code enforcement officer. Officers paid for through the city and then we get reimbursed to the community development block grant. However, we were able to work with the county and ask them to pay all the money upfront. So they're actually not only paying it upfront, but they're actually over the project, making sure that everything goes from point A to point B. Um, we will be having a meeting this Thursday. If you guys are available and I, what I'll probably do is just put it on to email. One of the things that I want from this body. And not to just be all over the place, it's just some input as it relates to color schemes for the complex. Because they're going to come through and they're doing everything. They're doing the lobby area remodel. And they're doing the bottom level, lower levels, all the locker rooms and all of that stuff. Um, remodel. That's the first phase. So that's eight hundred thousand. Most of the beers came in, the lowest one came in at one point seven million to do, redo the upstairs and all of that stuff, but that's on phase, hopefully page two. But we know that we're in the catch it right now and I'm hoping that, of course. Through the federal government, we get the earmark, the two point five million, I think, and I don't even know how it worked. I was announcing that we were awarded it, but. We're not necessarily awarded the two point five as of yet for the earmark for the, for the senior center. So.
Oh, from Ripley's office.
Right. So it was like we were, like she said.
She announced it.
Good, yeah, she announced and said we good, but at the same time, I haven't seen it.
It's just when it comes down.
Yeah. Like what's going on? Give me the money, you know, so. So at any rate, that's that. Um, we're very excited about that. That work starts actually this week. They went over there, demoed it out. Mr. Vivins with his people have been over there cleaning everything out and all that stuff. So we're really excited about that, what's going to happen over there. Uh, we already spoke on, uh, Alex Chapman and then demo properties. So we do have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our community development block grant where the county's going to actually, because, yeah, we don't have any money. They're going to tear the houses down for us. So, uh, we've identified quite a few in the city. I mean, with each one of you through your district, if you know anything that the city owns, if you're not sure if the city owns it or not. Send it to me if you think we should have a demo. I'll send Mr. Don out. He'll go out. Look, now this needs to happen within the next week or so. If I need your help, I just really met, I met with them last week. Bringing it to you right now. Okay?
How many are you going to be able to do?
Well, he said, uh, they're, they're averaging like seventeen, fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars per. Can you figure ten? Or tear down, because you got to do the environmentals and all of that. I haven't said if you, if we know that it's something, yeah, we know that it's something that needs to be torn down, we put it in. You want hers, don't you? You want hers, don't you? You don't own it though. See, we got to own it. That's the only thing. Somebody. We don't own that one yet, but that's a good one though. I can see what I can do though.
Nuisance abatement.
Yeah.
Oh, no doubt. We definitely working on that. Believe us, one hundred percent. Okay, all right, I'm going to work, but that's a really good one. Each daily. I like that one. Okay. All right, guys, anything else? If all minds are satisfied, call motion to close the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Support.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. That was long enough, guys. All right.